The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the meeting of the Town Council of Farmington and ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we have no presentations tonight, no public hearings, new items.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add an agenda item after executive session to take any action related to events surrounding the town meeting on June 5th, 2017, and any possible action regarding the Farmington High School Building Committee.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. At this time, I'd ask for any public comment and just remind you that we have a five-minute limit, and please give your name and your address. You can come up to the podium.
Pam Fisher, Five Jewels Court in Unionville. Although I was disappointed in the outcome of the high school referendum, I was thrilled to have 40 percent of the town vote. I think that's wonderful. I do wish to make a couple of comments. I know you will be discussing things going forward, but I personally found the building committee process, which I guess is traditional here, to be very, it was nonpartisan in its overall intent. And I think it's something that brings in the best of different viewpoints and different skill sets. So I support continuation of that same setup. However, going forward, if you decide to keep the current commission, the current group, I would strongly suggest getting a different, suggest getting a different Board of Ed Rep, who, again, not regarding her voting record, but primarily because I'm sure she has other priorities due to the 33 percent of the meetings that she missed for the building committee. And I just think that because this has become such a volatile issue that we need to have consistency representation there. Also, I strongly feel that Mr. Burnier ideally should no longer be part of that committee. Again, not because of his views, because I do think we need to have those different views within a group, but primarily because of the events that you'll be discussing later of June 5th, but also because of this letter that was given to the editor and the Valley Press dated June 29th. I take great exception to the part that says, "Compare this with the current building committee, which had no prioritization list and relied on contractors to scope the project. It's no wonder that the proposal called for replacing 98 percent of FHS, including modern sections of the high school not yet paid off. Contractors who are compensated according to the size of their projects should never decide the scope of the project." I personally find that insulting. It does not help our residents or to develop businesses here within the town to have that kind of inflammatory comment with insinuations. I just don't think that's at all helpful to the process. So I think by those two things alone that it should strongly be considered that that may not be the best representation on the FHS Building Committee. Finally, when it comes to the prioritization list that everyone keeps saying we should have, in the charge I read, yes, it said there should be priorities, but the Town Council specifically said that the priorities shall include the consideration of educational requirements, co-re requirements, ADA requirements, safety requirements, space needs, and phasing. And then as the building committee met, they felt that all of them were of equal priority. And so I would like to know, what is the priority? Is it the 23 entrances and exits, because you can't close them off because of the piecemeal setup? You can't just say, okay, we're not, we're just going to cut some of the exits out. It's code. Is it the OCR, ADA violations? At some point, I don't know, is there going to be any kind of fiscal fines or monetary damages because we've not become compliant with the OCR sightings? Is it the mechanical, the electrical? Is it the plumbing? Which obviously, we've had persistent issues. I mean, we've got leaks. Are there health considerations because of those leaks? And finally, the Neosca accreditation. The reason I keep coming here, my kids are done. People ask me, why do you keep doing this? I don't want to see future students go through what my kids did deal with with that building. The quality of education is wonderful, no complaints. But now, they don't even have the engineering situation up at the high school. We don't have programs we can develop. We have a library that half of it is practically unusable because it's not accessible to the second floor. You have a waitlist to get into the library because they can only handle so many kids, 1,300 kids, and I think we can only have 50 kids in the library at a time because they can't use the second floor. Now, thankfully, my children got into college before we had the Neosca warning. That's new territory for us. I don't know if there's a problem, but most of these colleges look at that. I don't know if it has any ramifications. But I don't think it helps. When you're so limited for special for some of the out-of-state schools, and you're fighting not just within the, trying to get your kid in from within its own school, but the Avon, the Granby's, the Canton's, it does not help Farmington to have the Neosca warning for our building. So if everyone could put aside the politics and just look at what, again, as the Town Council did say, these are the priorities, these are the needs, I think we can come to a solution that will fix the problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen K., 57, Garding Gate. I came here to talk about two issues. The first was the high school not being on the agenda, so thank you, Meredith, for adding that to the agenda, and all of you for voting in favor of that. With all the work that you've done to this point, to not have it on the agenda tonight was incredibly surprising. I'm also concerned, however, I'm not sure where it's going to fall on the agenda, about the August vote, or August meeting being potentially canceled. I saw that on the agenda. Depending on where you, where you fall as far as tonight's conversation, I hope you can vote on whether or not to cancel the August meeting, so that way it's dependent on how successful you are with tonight's conversation. The second reason that I was here is to discuss, John gave me a phone call after the vote for the high school. We had a very productive conversation. At the last election, the last high school, the vote in the high school, it was apparent that there were some very strong feelings on both sides, and people, a majority of the council, worked really hard in favor of getting it passed, and there were members who voted or worked really hard to not get it passed. It was interesting to me where the tactics were very different, and what was accepted and was not accepted on both sides were very different. And what John and I discussed was, while it's the state that sets the stipulations, it's up to us to interpret what's allowed. So for example, I was very respectful and prior to going to even my elementary school fair, I said, is it okay to have a sign that my children made on the back of my car? And it was cute, they said, make Farmington great again, and they had, they had all these things about voting. Yes, it wasn't part of any organization, it was kid-made, and I was asked, please take it down. And I did. I was asked not to pass out flyers at East Farms during parent pickup, and I did. I was asked not to put signs up on public property, and I did. And I'm concerned about the fact that there seems to be confusion about what's accepted and what's not accepted. So what John and I said was, it would make a lot of sense to have a specific list about what's accepted and what's not accepted, and he said he was going to bring it up at tonight's meeting. So I hope during New Business, that's discussed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd also like to comment on the recent FHS referendum. You know, I have to say, or I don't know if I'm the only one who was somewhat surprised at the results. I thought it would, although I didn't think the referendum would pass, I thought it would be a lot closer vote. So to me, that was a little bit stunning, really. But certainly, we heard the result loud and clear. I think what sort of jumps out at me is the fact that if you look at our building committee and our school board and our town council, all three bodies voted overwhelmingly for this particular proposal and referendum, and yet, close to 70 percent of the voters voted no. So clearly, there's a very big misalignment between our appointed elected officials, and I guess some of their views, and what came out in the referendum results. So that to me is a point that's worth examining. And I guess I'd like to make a couple of recommendations, just in the aftermath of this. I've had the opportunity to watch the process fairly closely. I have no action to grow on my children, are no longer in the school system, and I don't belong to a political party. I don't belong to any action committees. I'm recently retired, so I don't think the word "action" should be associated with me at any point in time. But obviously, very interested in how well we can do here as a town. So my first recommendation would be, I guess, to our elected officials, and that would be to step back and really reconnect with the community here in Farmington, and take that as your focus for the summer, because clearly, there's significant disconnect between the results of the process and the referendum, and wherever we thought we were heading as an elected body. So I think that's a very important thing to do. It sounds simple, but I suspect it might be a little tougher than you imagine, right? Because naturally, we all tend to spend time with and speak with people who share our views, right? It's comfortable, it's self-fulfilling, and we all kind of do that, right? We can all look at the way somebody's dressed and almost decide, you know, do we want to meet them, right? So you can use whatever analogy you want here, right? If you're a Red Sox fan, you got to go talk to the guy in the Yankee hat. If you're a Giants football fan, you got to talk to the woman wearing the Tom Brady jersey, right? Her heart's already spoken for, so, you know, it won't be a big deal down there, right? If none of your friends owns a Ford pickup truck, and it's the most popular vehicle in America, you should go find somebody and talk to them, and it can't be the guy who cuts your lawn. So I think you just have to dig a little deeper and reach out. Because the problem with these public forums and hearings is that you do tend to hear from the same people, maybe over and over, right? And so I don't think you're short on that feedback. It's really understanding where everybody else is coming from. Then secondarily, in terms of the FHS facility itself, I do think this team at the dais needs to start putting some points on the board. Now, I would imagine temptation is to regen the building committee, come back with some new version of an all-encompassing proposal for 99.5 million, and then throw it up against the referendum. Well, I would strongly suggest we not do that. I would recommend rolling back the process a little bit and turning back the clock, and look at where we were before we had a referendum, a building committee, consultants, and the tectonic study, right? And if you go back maybe seven or eight years now, to the original major requirement that came out of the FHS facility, it was to renovate the auditorium. That was the original major requirement. So if we go back to that, and look at that, then I think that might be the best way to take a discrete project and move forward with that. Something where you can have quality job done with a timeframe reasonable cost. And then the two largest indoor arenas you have, the basketball court where you could put the bleachers in, and the auditorium, would be ADA compliant. So I think that would bring us a long way in the public side of the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Colini from 30 High Street. Thank you to the members of the Town Council for your hard work, and now we're here in the summer. I am speaking today to urge you to stay focused and to take action on the problems at Farmington High School. I realize that a large percentage of the population voted no on the referendum in June, but I do not think that that lessens the severity of the problems that are well documented with the current facility. So we need to get moving again to create a plan that meets our students' educational needs, serves our community, gains ADA compliance, and is presented in a way that is more neutral in its packaging, that aids its passage, that is, has more diverse funding choices, all of that presented to the public. So I would urge you to please start taking the necessary steps to keep the momentum moving forward, so that as many of our Farmington students as possible are able to benefit from a safe facility that is built to withstand the test of time. I would also like to mention that I recently read a letter to the editor in the Valley Press that was written by Town Council member John Landry and Building Committee member Justin Burnier. The way the letter was written made it clear to me that these two individuals hope to see themselves included in the way forward for FHS. After the ethical violations committed by these two men, something we all saw on videotape, I believe it's imperative that they not be allowed to participate in any official capacity...
What ethical violations were committed by these two men?
Yeah, there hasn't been any indication, I mean... The videotape that I saw placing... There wasn't any, any decision made on that? I'm speaking just my own opinion. I felt it was an ethical violation. That's fair for me to say, right? I'm not, I'm not claiming the Town Council has spoken, it's just my opinion. So I think it's imperative that they not be allowed to participate in any official capacity for any high school project or building committee in the future. I think we must have higher standards and not allow the leadership of our town to stoop to unethical and unfair behavior. So I urge you as the council to take steps to ensure that these two men are not allowed to interfere with this high school project again. I think they should face consequences for the poor choice that they made. And if I still have time, I'd like to read a statement by Jean Barron, who lives at 22 Basswood Road, she's not able to be here tonight. She said, "I served on the Board of Education for 16 years and five building committees, most recently the Farmington High School Building Committee. I'd like to address the editorial written by Town Council member John Landry and Building Committee member Justin Burnier. In that editorial, they offer what they call a solution to the needs of Farmington High School by saying, 'We need to form a permanent building committee.' They claim the system that has worked for us for many years is broken. They throw out buzzwords like rush job, arbitrary date, single plans offered, et cetera. All these things didn't happen. Building committees in Farmington have been hugely successful and are always staffed with exceptionally knowledgeable town volunteers and have consistently met the scope of the project placed before them. Bill Wadsworth is the chair of the Farmington High School Building Committee, and he's a well-known person in Farmington who has a significant background in construction and served on building committees in the past. He's a champion for the open land we enjoy in town. The needs of the high school have been known for years. Over the last few years, the Town Council has received reports from the Farmington Board of Education about the needs of the Farmington High School. There's no way that anybody sitting on the Town Council was surprised by this project because they voted unanimously for the scope of the project. They also received the seven plans that the building committee looked at over an 18-month period. So here we are. The referendum was defeated for many reasons, but one of the main reasons is that the no group jumped on the arbitrary 184 million figure. Nobody was asked to vote to spend that. The needs of the high school are still here, but we need to now figure out a different way to approach fixing them. I have no doubt that there will be another thoughtful process, but I do hope we don't second-guess what we already know. Thank you." And again, that last statement was from Jean Barron.
Emily, can I have that, please, since you read it into the record, her statement?
Yes.
You have it on your phone?
I have it on my phone.
Can you email it to me tomorrow, please?
Yes, I'll come get you.
Yeah. Thank you.
My name's Kurt Crowland from 37 Red Coat Lane, and I just wanted to appear tonight to, to say that I was also very concerned about the referendum. My family moved here last year, and I immediately jumped in and started following the progress of the committee. One thing that I thought was very disappointing and disheartening was the fact that so many people apparently turned out to vote, and, you know, just through conversations and social media, it seemed like a lot of people had the wrong facts or didn't have the complete facts. So I thought that was very disappointing, when you come to meetings like this and the tours of the high school and so forth, and not a lot of people showed up, but a lot of people showed up to vote. So I thought that was a problem. And just as the prior gentleman said, I don't know how to fix that, but it seems that a lot of, a lot of the residents need to be kept up to date more, somehow, you know, get them more involved. I was also very disappointed with the group that came in, came in at the 11th hour, and I thought there was a lot of misinformation out there. Whether or not it was accurate or not, that's up to, up to the people to decide, but, you know, it seemed like that group was more or less anonymous, and they should have been, you know, if they wanted to be so vocal at the end, maybe they should have been more part of the process as opposed to just trying to convince people to vote no. So I am looking forward to following the rest of the progress. There is another local group, the Farmington Futures, which I've been following, and they keep me up to date on a lot of things that are going on, so, like this meeting, for example. So I am looking forward to, to follow the progress. Like I said, we moved here last year, and I can tell you that we paid a premium for our house as opposed to some of the surrounding towns, and the driving factor was the education, the educational system in this town. So regardless of what people think of the cost, it's definitely a long-term investment, and, you know, it's not $7,000 per man, woman, and child, it's, you know, a few hundred dollars over, over 20 years. Well, a few thousand dollars. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to reading of the minutes. June 13th.
I move to accept the regular Town Council meeting minutes of the June 13th, 2017 meeting.
Second.
Any corrections or discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. H, reading of communications and written appeals.
You have the correspondence that I sent to Yukon Health Center, so we look forward to working with Yukon and their fire department, and I'll keep the Town Council updated on the progress there. And I also left at your places some correspondence that have come in, which we'll submit to Paula, got them too.
Okay, thank you. I also just want to say that I did get a note from the Adorno family thanking us for their contribution, for us helping them out with their fundraiser at the, at Windy Trails. So, and I'll pass it around and everybody can see. It was a very nice thank you. Okay, report of committees. Yukon, no report. Land acquisition?
Nothing to report.
Green efforts?
No report.
Joint Town of Farmington, City of Hartford. We are now in the process of, or Hartford is, of going out for an RFP for the Battersham Park property. So we're very excited about that. It's been more than 10 years we've been working toward doing something there, and it's really underway right now. The pension fund has been taken over the, the property, and we're right now looking for developers and people to, to move that, that forward with Farmington. So we're very excited about it. Bike committee.
So the bike advisory committee will be meeting next week, next Thursday, and we're continuing to work on signage for roads on, on the streets. So if you see signs popping up for, to share the road, or to see charos painted on the road, that's the sort of work we're trying to do. And our efforts are really aimed at trying to connect town to town. So you'll see efforts more in terms of letting people know the best way to bike to West Hartford, or to bike to Bristol, or to bike to New Britain. And so that's the emphasis you'll see, and you'll see it gradually through the putting up of signs and charos.
Thank you. Gateway.
Nothing new to report.
High school.
I know that the, the chair is going to talk about the referendum and the, and the process forward a little bit in her chair report, but I just wanted to let the council know that the Farmington High School Building Committee did have sort of a wrap-up meeting to clear up outstanding payments, and at that meeting, Nancy was also present, and she thanked all of the members for their incredible time and effort and dedication, and to our professional partners as well, the architects, the owner's rep, the construction manager, obviously, our partners on the school side as well. We just expressed collectively our thanks for, for all of their, their time and hard work and for having such an inclusive process. You know, when we started this, it was with a huge level of community involvement with the visioning sessions, and then their, their commitment to keeping the public engaged throughout with accessible ways to provide feedback throughout the whole thing, and their just commitment to transparency. And so I just wanted to let you guys know that we thanked them for their efforts. And right now, they have no plans to meet on their schedule, they're sort of lying dormant for a little while until we find our footing and, and really work with the community members and the schools to find a, a path forward again. So that, that's where they are.
Thank you. Report of the council chair and liaisons. Chair report. I would like to address a couple of issues. One is that we have been meeting with the legislature about the cemetery, additional space for Riverside Cemetery, which they came to us and asked us for space in town to, to expand. We met with the DEP, and we're working out possibilities for other sites in the town. Also, a very important outcome for Yukon and the fire was that we were very happy that they are not disbanding the Yukon Fire. I'm sure all of you saw it in the paper or on TV, but we've been going through months of discussion with Yukon, and, and we're, again, very happy they're not disbanding it. It'll be a little bit smaller, but they're working with the branch at Yukon, coordinating those two, the Yukon here in, in Farmington and the Yukon at stores. And we also will be continuing to have communication with them as the changes, the few changes that they have put into place as they progress, so that we want to make sure that we're keeping, keeping up with what they're doing to see how it affects with, affects Farmington. But we're delighted at the, at the outcome right now of the Yukon Fire. And thirdly, I wanted to make a comment about the Farmington High School Building Committee, or Farmington High School, the referendum. As you all know, on June 15th, we had a referendum for the renovation of Farmington High School. The referendum did not pass. The voter turnout was nearly 40 percent, the highest percentage turnout for a referendum since 1995. I'm certainly happy that our community got engaged, but disappointed at the outcome. I believe that the Farmington community is in agreement that there are needs at the Farmington High School that should be addressed. The challenge that we face is finding a solution that our community will support. The needs are not going away. We'll step back, we'll look at what we need to do, and, and come forward with some possibility, with some, how the process will work in the near future. There is no Plan B waiting to be moved forward. The plan moved to referendum took a great deal of time and hard work. I again commend the building committee for their commitment, their dedication, and the long hours that they spent. There were many plans considered, many meetings and community sessions with a lot of public input. As we look for a solution, we look forward to more public input and participation. That's critical in the future as we move on. Hearing a 40 percent turnout and having it fail 2 to 1, we need to hear from the community and how and what they're thinking about as well. We'll begin again to find a solution to address the needs of Farmington High School that the community will support. Our citizens and our students deserve a solution for the future. I think our whole community believes that, it's just how we get there. So I just want to let everyone know, there is no plan we're going to jump on tonight or tomorrow. We're going to be thinking about this with the Board of Education and move forward. The Board doesn't meet in the summer, so we won't be coming out with another plan right now, but we're all thinking about it and concerned, and certainly want to talk to our, our neighbors, our friends, and see what the, what thoughts are, and then talk about this again. Okay, Board of Education liaison.
Madam Chair, the Board is meeting, not the Board, but the negotiations committee is meeting and negotiating the nurse's contract right now, and like you said, other than that, they're very quiet.
Thank you. UVIA.
Family movie night starts this Friday at dusk behind Union School, so Friday, July 14th is Moana, and again, these are free, and they are sponsored by UVIA, the Community Chest, and Farmington Community and Recreation Services. So that is this Friday, and then the next one up after that will be Willy Wonka on July 28th.
Thank you. Town plan and zoning.
Nothing new to report.
WPCA.
WPCA has its regular meeting tomorrow night.
Economic development.
Nothing to report.
Human relations.
Nothing to report.
Chamber of Commerce.
Madam Chair, I'm very excited to announce that the Chamber of Commerce has a new president. It's our very own Phil Chabot, has been elected president, and they also have, the Bristol Central Chamber of Commerce has a new executive director, and that is Michelle Hamilton. And the Bristol Central Chamber of Commerce is kind of the umbrella group that our Farmington Chamber of Commerce falls under, so they work hand in glove with each other.
Great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other liaison reports. Report of the town manager, Kathy.
You have the written report in your packet. I just wanted to note that part of our yearly goals was to give a report on Sub Edge Farm, so that is the report on the farm. So I included that in. And I don't think we have really an update on the budget right now. The state budget is obviously in flux at this point in time. Our, the year that we just finished off, we're closing out the books. You do, from the last meeting, we did receive all the grant funding.
Excellent.
One thing I did want to note is that what we are doing on the capital expenditures is that we are slowing down spending on the capital expenditures from July 1st, not all capital expenditures, because that's really our cash flow, that if things turn very bad with the state of Connecticut, that would be the first area that we would be able to look at. So we are slowing down some spending on the capital. And my understanding, again, is what I've read in the paper, is that, you know, they're going to be looking at the end of this month to see what goes on with the state. And if there's information, as we get it, I'll forward it along, but that's where we are right now.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve the report.
I move to approve the town manager's report.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Good. Any appointments?
No.
Let's see, old business, none, new business.
I move to authorize the town manager to purchase the town's streetlights from Eversource and execute the contracts with Tanco for the conversion of the streetlights to LED, and for the maintenance of the streetlights with a cost not to exceed 1.5 million.
Second.
I have Shannon, our assistant town planner, here. And you were here a few months ago and gave the council an update, and we've been moving along with that. So maybe you could give a summary about where we stand?
Sure, absolutely. As Kathy noted, the last time I was here before you was in January. To introduce the project, discuss some of the vendors that we had been interviewing, and present to you our decision with the vendor that we were selecting to move forward with. Since then, in March, we received documentation from Eversource with the inventory documenting all the lights that Farmington currently pays electricity for. There's roughly 1,730 lights that we are, we pay for. And as part of that correspondence with Eversource, we received our purchase price for those lights, which is part of this overall project. In April, the town council approved executing the contract with Tanco Lighting for the purpose of Tanco being permitted to conduct the audit and design phase of the project. So in May, they proceeded with that. And Tanco representatives were out on the streets of Farmington auditing and cataloging all the lights, and basically creating their own inventory. So we had a comparison to the documentation that Eversource had provided. The month of June has been spent reconciling that data and the 1,700-plus lights and items. Tanco did a second field audit to just verify a few elements. They've been reconciling data, and there's also been obligations on the town staff part to take a look at some of the reconciliation information. In July, Tanco will begin design with a selected manufacturer for the lighting, and we will proceed forward. As I noted, there's 1,730 lights that we're looking to purchase and convert to LED. We have reviewed photometrics, or, which are the lighting levels that we perceive as we're driving, it's the lighting level that we have on the ground. You'll recall with some of our conversations with respect to LED lighting, there's a factor referred to as color temperature. There's a 3,000 Kelvin color temperature, there's a 4,000 Kelvin color temperature, that we're really, we're looking at those two and trying to discern. The 4,000 is a brighter, crisper, whiter light, the 3,000, a little softer, and perhaps viewed as not as harsh by some. We looked at industry reports. We certainly listened to concerns that have been voiced regarding this. Based on the factors with respect to lighting levels, industry reports, and a lot of the information that we have synthesized since then, we are going to proceed with a 3,000 Kelvin color temperature on the lighting across the board for the streetlight conversion. And right now, what I have for you is a handout to review the current financial summary for this.
Thanks.
If folks are interested, I do have extra copies. I'll walk you through the sheet. It shouldn't take just a moment or two. So the warranty on the LED lights will be a 10-year warranty. There's a one-year warranty on the installation. The estimated life cycle for the LED lights is 15 to 20 years. The purchased cost from Eversource to purchase our lights so that we take ownership of the light fixtures is $534,740. The estimated cost for conversion of those lights to LED is $608,150, for a total cost of $1,142,755. There is, with converting to LED, there's, the LED are lower kilowatts. So there's roughly, they're roughly one-third kilowatt energy requirement. That's the whole purpose of doing this, right? They're going to use less energy. So with that, there's a rebate from Eversource. The rebate for Eversource is estimated to be $122,000, which would give us a net project cost of just over $1 million. Our current costs that we pay Eversource in our lighting fees for our electricity is approximately $250,000 annually, each year, in electricity fees for these streetlights. The projected annual energy and maintenance costs when we convert to the LED will be $60,000. $40,000 in energy, $20,000 in a maintenance budget. So we have a projected annual savings of $190,000. The, we've looked at then lease payback on this. If you look and use the entire savings, the annual savings, the rough payback is five and a half years. If we take three-quarters of the savings, the rough payback is just over seven years. We have been working with the finance director. We're looking at a seven-year lease term for this. So we will clearly have cost avoidance for the first seven years. There will be an incremental cost savings in those first seven years. The big savings starts after that, obviously, because there would be no loan being paid at that point. The 20-year savings is approximately $3 million. Obviously, some of that's going to have to be set aside so that we can purchase. Again, they'll have to be replaced, that life cycle, again, after they, the warranty expires at the 10-year point. They'll have to be replaced in that 15- to 20-year mark. So we'll want to have a set aside so that we can purchase new lights 20 years from now. And of the reduction of energy consumption is approximately 60 percent. So, so those are the finances that are associated with this.
One quick question. What is the cost when we do need to repurchase 15 or 20 years down the line? What is the anticipated cost for the 1,000, would you say? Was the number again?
My, it's probably going to be about, yeah, it's probably going to be about a half million dollars would be my guess. Again, it's, the technology is going to change. I mean, 20 years ago, we wouldn't have even thought LED lighting was something we could do and put up on streetlights. So 20 years down the road, there could be new technology, and we're looking at something else. Assuming we are going to replace kind for kind, we obviously, we wouldn't have to do the audit. There's a lot of these, the costs in that $600,000 line item. We wouldn't have to do some of that field investigation because that is all done. But the labor of switching them out and the cost of the fixtures would still be there. So I would, I would say we should budget about a half million dollars for that, for 15 to 20 years down the road. And we don't necessarily have to do it all in one year either.
That is my question. If we have a maintenance program, I assume they're going to be able to say, these need to be done, and these may not need to be done.
Right.
So as we save the 190 every year and continue to put it aside?
We can put some aside, right, exactly.
This is excellent, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very creative way to both save money and be green.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, no, it was nice to, it was fun to dig into this project. It was exciting, that's for sure. So as noted, then, our request of the council this evening for this project would be to authorize the town manager to purchase the streetlights from Eversource and allow us to execute the contracts with Tanco for the conversion of those streetlights then to LED and the maintenance. So Tanco will also be overseeing the maintenance for us. They'll have an online, there'll be something on the town website, as well as an 800 number that, excuse me, that residents can call for the, if there's outages or problems with a, with a light.
Great. Kathy?
I just want to thank Shannon and Russ, because as we've talked about at the last meeting, this was something that I was hesitant about because of the maintenance and some of the things, the staff that would, going out and fixing streetlights all the time. But, you know, it's really incredible, and when Shannon, Russ, and I looked at it, and, you know, we paid $250,000, and they're telling us, and they've proven it, they've looked at, is $60,000. I mean, it's just an incredible amount of savings. And, you know, for the first seven years, just the, you know, cost avoidance in the budget, and then we can, you know, bank money and start lowering that number. And, you know, our performance contract that we did, you know, the $3 million, it's the same thing, and that has worked out really well for us. And in September, at the September meeting, what you'll have on the agenda if you approve this, would be the lease financing. And then that would be the next document of doing the lease financing. You'd be authorizing me, and Joe was working with that, and it would be similar to how we did the performance contract. And so that would be the next item in September.
Kathy, how would that be structured then?
Let me, Joe? Amy just asked a question on how the lease financing would be structured.
Wouldn't like to, based on the financial schedule that we have, would be a seven-year lease program. Again, very similar to what we did with the Amoresco contract several years ago. So we'll do it over seven years. It'll be at least financing. In essence, it's going to be just borrowing the 1.1 million dollars, and then paying it back over seven years timeframe, probably a monthly payment schedule.
Are we charging interest rate for that, or is it just?
Oh, yeah, there's definitely an interest rate. You're probably looking at an interest rate of anywhere between 2.5% to 3%.
Which is the possibility of just paying it outright?
I'm sorry?
Did we ever analyze the possibility of just paying it outright, opposed to doing the, I'm just asking?
Yeah, if we had 1.1 million dollars lying around.
Joe probably wouldn't say, sure.
Do you have 2.5% or 3% realistically?
Again, you know, based on the time, we're probably looking at a 2.5% to 3% interest rate. The last time, when we did the Amoresco contract in 2012, we had an interest rate of less than 2%. Rates had gone up a little bit, so. And also, because of this type of financing, because it's based on the projected savings, there's always a little bit more risk involved in it than the normal financing that we do.
There's no fabulous grant we can get for being green?
I think Shannon just mentioned that we're going to get $122,000.
We're always looking for grants.
Believe me, I know. I've heard that one.
Any comments or discussion? John?
The 1,700 lights that you refer to, do they include the lights on state highways?
They include the lights on 4 and 10 and 177 and 6, but not on 84 and 9.
No, I was thinking those roads, 4 and 10 and so forth.
Right.
Thank you.
And that's, again, that's part of the audit. So we're finding that some of those lights aren't. So now we've got to see if they are owned by DOT, but that's part of that reconciliation and audit that we're muscling through at this point.
But the intention is, at the end of this project, all the lights on those state highways will be?
Providing we own them, yes. If DOT owns them, then we have, we can't change them. But DOT, my understanding is DOT is going through their own project systematically to change over the lights, again, for the same reason, because of the cost associated and the savings associated. As you're driving some of the larger state highways, 8491, you'll see on occasion that they're already starting to change those lights out. And it's very obvious, because those lights, the light is a very sleek, very slim fixture as compared to the larger globe fixture that we've been used to.
Thank you.
John?
So, just a couple things. Thank you very much for this. Both financially, this obviously makes sense. I'm very thankful that you're going with the 3,000K lights. I think that makes a big difference. I, you know, one thing, we talked about this a little earlier, but the dark skies awareness of, you know, do these light, will these lights shine more down than the incandescents, which tend to go in all directions? Are these going to be more directed down, and will that help towards dark sky awareness?
The, the lights are dark sky compliant. The Cobra heads face down, and these, because of the design and the LED and the very slim profile to the, they do shine directly down. There is no globe that hangs underneath the bulb, or underneath the head itself. So it improves from a dark sky compliance standpoint. Certainly, our decorative lights that we have in some of the residential neighborhoods, that's not going to change, but they're also low wattage lights, you know, comparatively. So, and they will, they're, they will, again, be more dark sky compliant. It's just kind of the nature of the LED light.
So we may see stars again.
You should see stars.
See a few more.
You should see stars again.
All right.
And a full moon.
And a full moon. Those you can't, if you, you know, come on down to my place, because we had no trouble seeing them, and I've got a, I have a streetlight at the end of the street, so.
A new moon is better for stars.
A new moon, yes.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
Well, again, just thank you on, you and Russ, on behalf of the council. We were excited about this when we heard about it for the first time, and now to have the dollar amounts, it's even more exciting. So thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing it in September.
Great. Thank you, Shen.
So we have a motion on the floor. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Great. N2.
I move to extend the agreement between the Town of Farmington and Waste Material Trucking Company, Inc., for a one-year period ending June 30th, 2018.
Second.
So we're looking to extend our waste material trucking company for another year. We've reviewed this request, and we agree that it's reasonable in light of the changes that have been made over the contract over the recent years, and it would be at no change of price. So I think this is something that would be a benefit to the Town of Farmington to extend for another year.
The question I have is, why one year? It was, we started with more than one year. Is there any, or did they just ask for one year and not offer more?
The contractor, we have to meet every April to negotiate this price for the next year. And basically, what he indicated, he's using the process of paying off the vehicles when we convert it to the carts. He bought new vehicles, and he financed them over seven years, coincidentally. And he's in the process of paying off those vehicles. So he's interested in keeping the contract for one more year at the current price, but he doesn't want to go beyond one year guaranteeing the same price. So he must, he must have flexibility in negotiating a higher price next year if he needs to.
Okay, thanks. I just had to ask a question. It certainly is a great price to have it be the same, so, thank you. Okay, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N3.
I move to set a public hearing on Tuesday, September 12th, 2017, at 7:05 PM in the town council chambers concerning the issuance of bonds by the Wisconsin Public Finance Authority and a plan of finance for Mosaic.
Second.
So Mosaic is a Nebraska nonprofit corporation, and they operate in 10 states throughout the country. Mosaic has a group home in Farmington, serving members of the community, and as part of a larger refinancing and financing group of homes, Mosaic plans to refinance, I mean, finance improvements to the group home, roughly $25,000. Mosaic intends to complete this financing through taxes and bonds, through the Public Finance Authority of Wisconsin, who will lend the proceeds. And under, because of, this is a tax-exempt financing under Section 147F, they have to have a public have a public hearing. And it's, it's, we have never had something like this, is the first time that this has come to my attention. But a lot, some of the other communities, Mosaic has come, and it's been reviewed. And the Town of Bloomfield has recently completed this process. They had the documents reviewed by the town attorney, who affirmed that the town is not issuing any bonds, and there's no cost to the town. The Town of Farmington will not be responsible for any payments. It's just a requirement that the Internal Revenue Service requires that a public hearing is held. So that's what this is about.
But are we voting on anything?
They, they are...
On the public hearing?
You're going to do a public hearing?
You're voting to do a public hearing, yes.
We're just, yes, got it, yeah. It's just, because if we have no authority, no. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. N4.
I move to authorize the town manager to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Farmington the attached conservation easement across town property abutting Sarah Drive.
Second.
Just update that the Conservation Commission accepted the easement, and the TPZ did a recommendation, it was recent, they approved it, I mean, accepted it too at their meeting. So this is now the final approval of the easement for me to sign.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Kathy, for this work on putting this together. Any, no questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. N6.
I move to authorize the town manager to execute the required documentation for the Connecticut Community Connectivity Grant Program.
Second.
So, this is a grant that we were made aware of. Meredith, I think you were made aware of it too, but it was something that Russ and the staff had been working on, and it's a grant that we are looking to apply for. If you remember, that we have another grant, the CROG grant up by the Yukon Health Center, it's to put sidewalks, bike paths, and that's the, the design study. It was a $400,000 grant. What we're planning on doing is taking a portion of what they're doing there, because this grant, you have to have the design and the documents, everything ready, taking that, and this is actually to pay for the improvements. So this, the grant would, the first grant was to do the design, and this grant would be to actually do the improvements. So we're still looking, what our proposal is still in development. The projects we are considering includes installation of a crosswalk, including pedestrian push buttons, changes to the signal timing, ADA ramps, and a painted crosswalk at the intersection of South Road at Bird's Eye Road. In addition, the project will include the installation of approximately 1,000 to 1,500 linear feet of sidewalks along the east side of South Road from the intersection of Bird's Eye Road north to Route 4. So that would be the grant that we would be applying for, and I think we have the conceptual drawings, and the project cost estimates are required, and that's our first grant. We have that, and it's due October 1st.
Okay. Any questions? Just note that I always see a ton of people working in that area, and that really will be utilized by the residents.
So, so this is a program which I would support, it'll help that whole area, which
is getting busier and busier, and that's good. Is this an ongoing grant program?
Let me ask Russ, I'm not too sure.
Not sure yet.
Okay. So that's something we should keep an eye on, because there's obviously other places in town where we could use help in making things more pedestrian, bicycle-friendly, and this will be a start.
Right. And one of the reasons it's just worked out very well, because it's, it had some short timing, is that with the other grant, they had all the designs already done, and everything was ready, so this is just now to actually get the work done. So we'll keep an eye on this grant, because I, you know, there's definitely other areas about where we can do some sidewalks or different things, so.
Absolutely.
And I just have to say that this is just another example of us doing the design and being ready, and then being ready to get out there and do the work. We really have a great town in that we do all the design ourselves, which, instead of waiting for the state to do things, we do it, and we're ready. So a lot more gets done because of that. So, thank you, Kathy, for your, your people. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. N6.
I move to cancel the August 8, 2017, regular town council meeting.
Second.
Any questions? John?
So obviously, we have a, a big matter in front of us, which is how we're going to move forward with the Farmington High School Building Committee or process. I would have thought we would have used this time to talk about potential moves forward. Is that scheduled for some other time, or...
In September, when the, when the BOE is back, too.
Okay, so we're going, we're going to have a joint meeting?
Oh, I don't know if it's going to be a joint meeting, but we've already, we meet quarterly, Kathy and I do, with Kathy and Chris, and we've already had some discussions about things they're going to be bringing to us. So that's just all, no secrets, it's just all going to be coming forward. But the Board of Ed doesn't meet in the summer, so we're just going to wait and meet in September with them, and just kind of rethink what's going on now, and see how, really how we can best move forward with the process, so.
All right.
I think, can I add to that? I just think my personal preference would be to, as early as possible, meaningfully engage the public, and I don't know yet what that looks like, if it's to have, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm sure there are dozens of ways that we can do that. And, and August 8, in the middle of the summer, when people are likely to be away, is probably not the best timing, particularly when Board of Ed members are away, and, and school staff, and all of the people that we would want present as well. But if, if we, you know, start to bring this together as people return, and, you know, it's fall, I would just love to make sure that we include the public, kind of from the ground floor on, which I know is what you said, too.
Yeah, definitely, we want to include the public. And one of the other things was, that in the summer, people are away. Vacations happen, and we did not want, that's one of the reasons why the referendum was, we wanted to get that certainly before June 30, but we wanted to be able to have people here. The summer is very difficult to get people here, and we certainly don't want to have any big meetings without public and accessibility. So that's another reason. But it absolutely is very important that the public be involved. And again, I can't say, with 40% coming out, it's just, that's a huge number, and we do need to keep people informed, we do need to, do need to hear other perspectives. And as someone else mentioned, it's important to talk to people and get some perspective on what thoughts are. And hopefully, through that, we can come together and work together for a solution. So we're all going to be thinking about it and looking for how to move forward in a productive way for, for the town and the kids, so. All those in favor, N6, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. N7.
I move to authorize the town manager to accept the $10,000 grant award for the program FunCops through the Office of Policy and Management under the Police and Youth Program.
Second.
So this is the first year that the Farmington Community Service Department has received this grant. The grant entitled FunCops is designed to provide engagement opportunities between youth and the police officers. Farmington is one of nine communities awarded these funds. Our counselor for the Juvenile Review Board will plan and implement the activities and programs, and he'll be responsible for the completion. And Chris Montes is our counselor, and he will be working with the police officers on this and coming up with some different programs. So it's our first time, and there's been some training, and I'll be reporting on it because it's new to us, and it looks like it's a, it looks like a great grant for us, so.
Is there a certain age that they target for this, or is there a range, or...
You know, Peter, I don't know. I can find out for you, but I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head. Kind of a win-win, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. N8.
Nate, I move to approve the following property tax refunds, as shown on Agenda Item N8.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. Motion.
I have a question before we go into executive session. You added as a new item, an action item, after executive session. Do you need me to stay to take minutes? No.
Paul, I do have a question on that, if I may. Does that Agenda item need a letter or a number?
Yeah. Where's my agenda here? That would be... N9.
N9.
N9, yeah. And I get, you know, you rattled something off, you gotta give me a...
I have it. Do you want it?
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right.
And Peter, do we have one tour planned? Okay, so there is no land.
No land.
Hey, Nancy?
Yes.
Peter, do we have executive session?
No land.
Oh, okay, because Duncan is going to be...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, or a little early.
Okay, well...
But that's fine. So I think we should just...
Just move.
Move into executive session? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss attorney-client privileged communications exempt from disclosure at 8 o'clock PM. And that attendance, sorry. And that attendance in the executive session shall be limited to members of the town council, the town manager, and the town attorney.
Town attorneys.
Town attorneys, plural, sorry.
Okay, just want to be accurate.
Wait, just before we do, Paula, it's, we probably aren't going to go right into executive session, because we're going to shoot the camera and wait for, we could wait, waiting for Duncan. Should we hold off?
Well, why don't you lay, leave a time a little bit later than 8 o'clock?
Okay.
8:10.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Should we call for a recess, since we're not in executive session?
Yeah.
Paula, do we need to call for a recess if we're not in executive session?
To be absolutely appropriate, probably.
I would.
Okay. So I need to have a motion to recess?
I move to recess for 10 minutes.
Second.
All those...